It's gonna turn on, yes.
Andrew, are you there? You should be coming in now.
Yeah. I'm here. Is something happening differently?
Yeah, for some reason, nobody's able to move over to be a panelist. So I just have to wait for them to all pop up.
Okay.
Hey, Kim. Yeah, for some reason, I went over, I guess, to the
Yeah, everybody did, and I don't quite know why.
And it's not on practice mode over there, just saying.
So I'm just waiting for everybody to kind of pop in, and then I can move everybody over.
Oh. Made it. Do you guys hear me?
Yep.
Is Liz calling in too?
Yes, I think that's her 917.
That's her number, okay.
Hello, it's Liz. Thank you.
Hi, Liz.
I don't know what's happened to my Wi-Fi, but it's just not, not working tonight.
So everybody's here.
Great. I think we're all set. Okay, terrific. Thank you. Great to see everybody. Glad that we could all be together for tonight's budget hearing. It's Thursday, May 28th, and I'll make a motion to return to public session. If I could ask Julia to please second. Thank you so much. And if everybody would please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Aye.
Thank you. Terrific. So as I mentioned, this is our opportunity for a budget hearing this evening. And just a moment, I'm gonna ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And then we can take a moment for board announcements. So would everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation
under God indivisible indivisible
justice for all. Terrific. Thank you so much. We really appreciate that in a few moments, we'll also be joined this evening by our candidates for seats on the Board of Education. And as I mentioned, we'll have our opportunity for a budget hearing. I just wanted to begin by saying thank you so very much to Kim Monzen and Mary Ann for their Herculean effort in getting the ballots out. We last met a week ago, Thursday, the 21st. And on Friday, thanks to Kim and Mary Ann and a few of our election inspectors and Rich Harkwicke, 14,000 ballots were mailed to residents of Katona-Louisville. And we can't thank you enough for the incredible project management and dedication that went into that effort. And we look forward to receiving ballots from our voters. So thank you so very much. And we can just go around if we have any board announcements tonight. I wasn't sure whether board members had additional announcements. Welcome back, Aiden. It's great to see you.
Thank you, thank you.
Happy to have you here. And if we don't have other announcements, then Andrew, we would love to hear from you if you have some announcements.
Sure. Thanks, Marjorie. A few updates today. I think, I think new since last week. We learned at the very end of last week from the state that the commissioner and the regents have formed a task force focused on reopening for September, which is not to say that a decision has been made. I have to be very clear in saying that. But rather to say that the state has asked all school districts to begin thinking about how what September could look like, all the various options of what it could look like. And while we're asked to do that individually as districts, the state has also formed its own task force that will be holding regional meetings through the month of June and into July. They hope their goal is to issue guidance to districts around about mid-July. And Governor Cuomo has indicated most recently that he won't be making a decision about schools until also sometime at least into July. So it's, the work is all sort of happening in parallel at the moment. We'll, we are, we have begun in district, thinking about all the different options for September. Families can expect, actually in the coming days, we'll be sharing a survey to get some input and feedback from families on what the experience has been at home this spring. We want that to inform our thinking for the fall. But we're already meeting with staff in the district. And also, we will, once our work progresses a little bit, we'll be inviting other stakeholders, community members, parents, the community leaders, and others to join us in that work, which is what we anticipate the state will be expecting. They've indicated that they would like all districts to submit plans. Some point in July, they haven't given us an exact date. And again, actually, the governor has said explicitly, the fact that we're submitting plans doesn't indicate that he will necessarily open schools in September. It's just they want us thinking about how it could happen, and then he will make a decision at some point after that. So that's obviously keeping us very busy, very mindful. We are, even though the state hasn't issued guidance, I want to assure the community, there is quite a bit of guidance out there that we can use as resource. The CDC has more recently issued fairly extensive guidance for schools. And there is the experience that other schools around the world are having in more recent months as they attempt to reopen. So we'll certainly keep the community informed as that work progresses in the coming weeks and into early July. And we will be communicating frequently about where we progress on that. In addition to that news, families can expect to continue receiving information about the end of the year and the return of student belongings that we have some in our schools. We don't have a great deal, but any belongings of students that we do have, we will certainly be returning to students before year is out, and you'll get more details on that in the coming days. Along with, I think, some of the information about end of year celebrations has started to come out to families, and you can expect more of that. And as Marjorie mentioned already, the ballots are in the mail. We, we actually think many families have already received their ballots at this point. If you have not received your ballot, if you don't receive it in the next couple of days, we encourage registered voters to contact our Board Clerk, Kim Monzen, so that we can help you have access to a ballot. Before that deadline, remember to turn them around in the mail as quickly as you can because they, the deadline is not when they are to be postmarked. It's when the district is to have received them by 5:00 on June 9. I think that's it for me for an update tonight. Thanks, Marjorie.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Any questions? Clarifying questions? Okay, if not, then I think we're ready to welcome our Board of Ed candidates who are going to take a moment to share their thoughts regarding their candidacy for seats on the Board of Education. Welcome.
Hi, I'm trying to figure out how to reduce my screen. Sorry. It's all on here. One second.
Take your time. Welcome Samantha. Welcome Catherine. Welcome Bill. And I think that we're ready for you, if you're ready. And my understanding is that we'll go in alphabetical order by last name, which means that Samantha, the floor is yours when you're ready. Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I really appreciate you guys giving us the time to speak this evening. And I hope everyone is doing well during this crazy and unprecedented time. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Samantha Holzman. I just want to give a brief background. I know a lot of this is repetitive, but I guess just bear with me. I grew up in a Los Angeles suburb and attended the University of Michigan, where I earned my BA in English Literature. Later, I attended UCLA's Extension Program, working on my certificate in interior architecture and design, and worked in Los Angeles as a high-end interior designer. My husband, daughter, and I moved to Westchester from Los Angeles in 2012 and on to Katona in 2013. I've spent the last four years serving on the Katona Elementary School Parent Teacher Organization Executive Board, the last two years as co-president, and the last year as co-president of the KLSD Parent Council. All experiences and opportunities that have allowed me to connect, listen, strategize, and innovate with families, faculty, staff, and leadership throughout the district. My leadership experience has been concentrated on enriching the lives of the KES students and families. As a school board trustee, I want to build on that mission, focusing on the growth, wellness, safety, progress, and success of all our KLSD students. I want to advocate for the whole child experience and foster an educational environment where all students are treated with respect, empathy, and compassion. I believe in supporting and augmenting the strong academic and extracurricular programming that KLSD is renowned for, while adopting an annual budget that is fiscally responsible. I don't agree with this idea that I've heard in the last couple of weeks, that institutional knowledge of our board is a prerequisite for serving on the Board of Ed. Between the strength of our superintendent, his cabinet, and the current board members, all who I value and trust, along with my leadership experience in our district, I'm here to defy those fears. I'm forward-thinking, meticulous, responsible, and transparent. I didn't choose to run for the Board of Ed because of COVID-19. I'm running because I don't take for granted having the opportunity to be part of this incredible community that I'm deeply invested in, and I see it as my mission to give back. I have a kindergartner and a third grader at KES. I have 12 years ahead of me with students in our school district, and I'm deeply invested in making it the best it can be for a very long time. I have a pulse on the issues facing our students and direct access to families that are in the thick of navigating our school system. In the light of the pandemic, KLSD has a hill to climb. And I know that students and parents are scared. But our foundation is strong, and there's value in resetting after a setback. The health and safety of our students is my number one priority in getting back to school and on track to success. There will be logistical hurdles, learning challenges, and financial setbacks as we essentially redesign the traditional school day. If elected, it is my mission to stay true to our strong learning commitment. Voting for me is voting for a strong future for our district. I will show up every day and advocate for our students' best interests so that they have the confidence to rise to the challenges of our time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And best of luck to you, and thank you for taking the time to speak with us. We really appreciate it. And it's my pleasure, Catherine, to welcome you to our meeting, and the floor is yours when you're ready. Please.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Catherine O'Stryker. I was born and raised in Bedford and attended the Bedford Central School District. My husband and I moved to Katona 18 years ago because we fell in love with Katona's small-town feel, its sense of community, and excellent schools. Our five children have attended or attending the Katona-Louisville Schools. My oldest, Margaret, graduated in 2017 and is a rising senior at Villanova School of Nursing. Allison graduated in 2019 and is a rising sophomore at the University of Vermont. She's a Division I athlete and majoring in education. Charlie will graduate from John Jay High School in a drive-in graduation celebration on June 23rd. He will be attending Duke University in the fall and plans to study math and physics. Walter is a rising sophomore at John Jay High School, and my youngest, Audrey, will enter the 7th grade in middle school. I graduated from St. Lawrence University with a BA in psychology and sociology. I continued my postgraduate education at Manhattanville College, where I received a master's in elementary education. I worked as a teacher for three years before starting my family. I began volunteering in their schools 15 years ago and have served multiple years as class parent, team parent. I've supervised staff appreciation luncheons and directed KES 5th grade variety shows. I have served three terms on the executive panel of the John Jay High School PTO. First, as its treasurer, and I am now completing my second term as president. I have also served as a member of the John Jay High School Parent Council for the past three years. I am running for the KLSD Board of Education because I believe in the importance of an engaged, relevant, and active learning environment for our students. I also believe it is imperative that we focus on the physical and mental health of our students. If elected, I will strive to advance our students' academic experiences, athletic programs, art programs, and extracurricular activities. I believe the school board should support, lead, and inspire our faculty and administration while remaining fiscally responsible. The onset of remote learning has been completely disruptive for our entire education system. I would like to take a moment to thank our faculty and teachers who have worked so hard and quickly to implement remote learning, but it has been challenging. We have a lot to learn in order to be prepared for what the reopening of schools will look like in September. If elected, I hope to provide input regarding upcoming decisions by envisioning what those answers will look like for my very own children. I have truly enjoyed working with other PTOs, teachers, administrators, students, and community members to help develop and institute the best educational experience possible for our children. I believe that my extensive volunteer experience, educational background, and life experiences accumulated through our five children's elementary, middle, and high school careers give me a unique perspective and make me a strong candidate for the school board. I thank you for your time and your consideration, and I wish everybody health and well. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you for taking the time to speak with us, and best of luck. We appreciate your remarks. And Bill, now it's my pleasure to welcome you to speak with us about your candidacy, and the floor is yours when you're ready. Bill, I think you're muted. Bill? I think you're muted. Bill? Bill, I believe you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. I believe you were muted. We can hear you now.
No, I have a bad connection, I think. Naturally. You check it all day, and then it fails at the right moment. Thank you. I looked all over the house to try and find an angle that would work for me, and I gave up. So make the screen as small as you can. And we'll get through this together. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about my candidacy for reelection. Serving on the board for the past six years has truly been one of the singular honors of my life. Prior to the pandemic of COVID-19, I had not planned to run again. However, my sincere assessment is that the challenges the district will face over the next few years will make my board experience and institutional memory valuable. I think it's a sign of health that our district has two outstanding new candidates, the two you just heard from, who are interested in joining the Board of Education. For the first time, I'm not even sure I have the unanimous support amongst the voters in my household. While hurtful, I am buoyed by the confidence there are no wrong choices amongst the candidates. After six years on the board, there are likely actions of the board or statements I have made that people disagree with. I do not ask that those who disagreed with me change their minds, but rather to evaluate the soundness of my logic and my process in my decision-making. Was I rational, reasonable? Was I willing to consider and weigh all arguments and presented information? I believe even those who have disagreed with me can attest to this. One of the hallmarks of my tenure has been my insistence that data and acquired information play a prominent role in district decision-making. I have helped to develop and interpret several of the metrics the district uses today. An obvious need concerns distance learning, which we've had thrust upon us. But this method certainly applies to curricular decisions as well. Because the first steps in our remote learning fallout have inevitably had ups and downs, as can only be expected, and despite enormous effort on, by everybody involved. The key will be to identify areas in need of improvement via surveys of students, teachers, parents, other sources of data, and then making adjustments informed by all this, and repeating the cycle. This is an endeavor for which my experience and track record indicates I may be of particular use. At the same time, tending to the financial side of things is a central Board of Ed set function. While maintaining high educational standards and offerings, we have been very careful stewards of the public's money. Specifically, on average, over the past six years, the budget has increased 0.42% per year and the tax levy by only 0.35% per year. This year, the tax levy growth is zero. The district is almost certainly going to face financial insults like reduced state aid, so budgeting and informed planning will be necessary. Demonstrated financial prudence over six annual budgets is part of what I am referring to when I argue that experience and institutional memory have value in weathering the coming choppy waters. I hope I have made the case that my track record of my, and my time on the board, when my experience on the board, and my skill set are such that I can earn the honor and privilege to represent the community for three more years. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you for speaking with us. Best of luck. We appreciate your remarks. And just, you know, if I can take a step back and once again, just thank each of the candidates for joining us and for your thoughtfulness and for your willingness and interest in serving on the Board of Education. I know I speak for the entire board when I say we sincerely appreciate that, and thank you. And you're welcome to stay with us. We hope you will for the duration of the meeting or to hear about the budget one last time. And I think at this point, now we're ready to transition to the next agenda item, which is our budget hearing. But thank you so very much for taking the time to speak with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think with that, Andrew, I'm going to just ask us to take a moment to transition to the public hearing. And I'm not sure whether we're gonna share a screen to show some slides. Take your time.
Yep, we're gonna share a screen, which
Okay, thank you.
People are starting to look at now.
Terrific.
So these are slides that the board is very familiar with. The public hearing, however, is required of all school districts in New York State within a certain timeframe prior to the budget vote itself. This year, of course, things being very unusual, the budget vote is actually, in a sense, ongoing now as we're presenting it, but it has to be within a certain number of days of the, of this year, of the end of that vote on June 9. So that's why we present this again tonight. But for those who may have watched previously, and certainly for the board, we can say there's nothing new in these slides from the most recent presentations that we've done. Maybe the only thing that's changed is this title slide, but we, so we will go through nonetheless, and certainly if there are questions, we're happy to take them. The first slides always refer to our learning commitment because that's the basis of all that we do in the district, as well as our budgeting that takes place. So here's where we speak about the engaging, relevant, and active learning environment that we always aspire towards. And then we follow with our board's goals. Our board has set two goals, two categories of goals for the last several years, one in the area of leadership, which is seen here, and the next in the area of fiscal stewardship. And we do believe that we are presenting a fiscally responsible budget. Not only one that does not exceed the tax cap this year, but one that keeps the tax levy flat from this year into next year with no increase. We move on then to a slide that shows the calendar of the development of the budget, budget this year. That development was somewhat extended by the virus, unfortunately, and things were delayed. Of course, the budget vote was delayed, so it extended the period of time well beyond February and gets us here to tonight. But it's a, it's an extensive development project that begins all the way back at the beginning of the school year, if, if not, in fact, even earlier than that. We always look to enrollment because that drives so much of what we do in the district, and it's so important to us, of course. And most will be familiar with the fact that our enrollment has declined, as is the case for the vast majority of districts in New York State. But some do decline more so than others. Ours went through a more rapid period of decline some years ago. But in more recent years, that decline has leveled off to the point that from this year to next year, the last number there, the 2,905 students that we're projecting, that's the only projected number on the slide. And you can see that we're projecting a decrease of just 14 students from this year to next across the entire district. And of course, we're not sure whether that projection will hold or not. This year, we ended up with a few more students than we projected at this time last year. So if that proves to be the case, and then next year, then our enrollment will prove to be just about flat. So we move on from there. Here is the proposed budget, the, the summary numbers. This year's budget, $110,169,072. Proposing a budget of $111,472,680. That's an increase of just over $1.3 million, or 1.18%. And again, we say very quickly that although there's an increase in the budget, that reflects increases in revenues other than property taxes. There is no increase to the requested property tax contribution for the taxpayers of Katona-Louisville, the collective property tax contribution. Moving to the next slide, we talk about the four drivers that run the school programs, professional learning, enrollment, and class size, and infrastructure. These are the things that we look to, and we are very pleased to have these enhancements on the slides here tonight, which, again, the board has seen and heard about quite extensively in the past. We, I will add the caveat here that as has been referenced, I think, already tonight, we think there's a very strong possibility that the state aid that is currently projected in our school budget will in fact prove to be significantly less in light of the state's financial challenges. The governor has the authority to reduce state aid, or to change state aid, I should say, at four times throughout the year. Doesn't have to reduce it, but he's indicated that if the state finances are as challenging as anticipated, then he will in fact reduce state aid. So while we have, while we list these enhancements here, and we are excited to list them, there is the chance that we won't be able to support all of them, depending on what happens with that state aid. There's the next slide goes to professional learning. I'm not reading through all of these. I think, again, the board is very familiar, and folks can read through these on their own. But again, lots of, of things here that are supportive of new programs for students, things that we think are important. I'll linger here for a moment to say that, once again, we're very appreciative of the board for including those contingency positions in the budget. Those are positions that we don't necessarily fill right away, but if we have perhaps an influx in enrollment, which is some people think is a possibility because of all that's happened in the world in the coming year, or we see a difference in, in elective selections among our high school or secondary students, these contingency positions allow us to still maintain favorable class sizes and provide the classes that our students are interested in taking. So we really appreciate having those in that budget, whether we end up using them or not. And then I've mentioned before that it's these infrastructure projects down here at the end, and we'll say more about this later in the presentation where whether there's a reduction in state aid, or whether we should have to move towards a contingency budget, these are some of the areas where it's more likely that we would not be able to do these projects. We hope to be able to do them. In the, in the budget presented tonight, there are funds allocated to do them. But should things change, we would look to not do projects like these, rather than do anything that would more directly touch the student experience in classrooms. So now we look in a little bit more detail at the enrollments. The first slide, as we've done for a number of years, we pull out the kindergarten numbers. So rather than show them at each school, we show them collectively for the entire district. That's because it's so difficult to project the unknown of the new enrollments in kindergarten each year that we find we can be a little bit more accurate if we show the overall collective number rather than break it out by school. So you can see here a slight increase in the allocation of staffing from this year to next year in order to maintain what is a very favorable class size on that slide. And then we go into the schools themselves. Again, we're, we're very comfortable with all the class size numbers here that are reflected in the column on the right. Generally, we look, and families will look at the sections as they move from one year to the next. And in all but one case across all the three elementary schools, the sections as they travel from one grade to the next remain the same. They all do here at Increase Miller, and that's why you see the same number of sections down at the bottom for this year and next year. At Katona is the one place where there is a change, moving from second grade to third grade, you see that the four sections move to three. And that's, you can see right away here that, you know, this is the number that's always very tricky for us. You can see that in first grade, currently, there are just three sections for 68 students, but because of fluctuations in enrollment in prior years, there happened to be four sections for just one more student in second grade. So that number is a little lower, but it becomes a little bit higher next year when we move it to three sections. We're still very comfortable with that number. And we know from experience that the students will continue to have very good experiences with those class sizes. So that's one place where there's a change. We point that out. But upon, again, even though you see an increase in the total number of sections down here at the bottom, as one grade moves to the next, the number of sections per grade stay the same in each case. So those are the three elementary schools. Middle school. This is, we've, we've mentioned before that it's, the elementary school enrollment has become now relatively flat from year to year, and the decreases that we're seeing are now have moved up into the secondary. from year to year, and the decreases that we're seeing are now have moved up into the secondary schools as the smaller grade levels move up there. So you can see here that the total middle school enrollment for next year is moving from 668 to 656. With most of that decline being in the sixth grade, which is why down here at the bottom, you see too fewer sections in sixth grade than you do at the others. But I can also say very quickly that those eight sections in sixth grade next year are the same number of sections that these students experienced in fifth grade this year. So again, we're we're comfortable that they will be very good experiences for those students. And finally, moving to the high school. Again, you do see some decline overall from 1,042 to 1,009 students. We always say very quickly here that these class sizes, these averages projected here for the high school are very different from when we project class sizes in the elementary schools, where we can be pretty confident that the numbers that we project will be accurate if in in each of the classes, assuming that the enrollment stays what it is. Whereas in the high school, because of all the electric choices and all the different classes that students have access to, these numbers are truly just averages. They don't reflect what class sizes will necessarily look like. Some will be higher, some will be lower. I'm sure Aiden would attest to that if we asked him to at the moment. So now we're going to move into some staffing changes for next year, and I'm going to turn over to Alice to talk about these next two slides. Thanks, Alice.
Sure. So when you look at this slide, you can see we have the addition of the staff developing positions, staff developer positions, rather. We have the additional psychologist at the elementary level to begin the TSP program at that level, which we already have at the middle school and high school. And then we have 1.6 in general education and special area classes. And so a lot of that's based on student choice or where we need another special for a section at the elementary school. You'll also see we have some reductions in positions. Those are based on enrollment and projected need. And as Andrew mentioned before, the contingency positions, if the needs changed, we could have accessed that FTE to support students in those areas. On the next slide, there's a look at the support roles. So you see that we've added some nursing staff at the secondary schools. And budget to budget, we have a change in teaching assistance, and that's for special education and for kindergarten. And then we also have some reductions in our aides, bus drivers and clerical. So all FTE is not exactly created equal, but you can see on the bottom that overall we're down 1.69 positions in the budget that's being presented to the community.
Thank you, Alice. And now we're going to move forward more into a little bit more depth into the budget analysis, and I'll turn over now to Dave and or Danell, who are going to take us through these slides. Thank you.
As you look and you've seen this slide before, the proposed budget of 110 million, 169 is the current budget, oh, 72. The 111 million, 472,680. And that is 1.1 budget to budget increase. As you can see, the budget history in this year, you can see 2020 opposed tax levy is a 0% increase. A budget to budget increase of 1.18. And the average increase over the last six years, the budget to budget change has been 0.06%, while the tax levy change over that same time period has averaged a negative 0.18%. Where where are the budget? Where is the budget? Into fund transfers, which is the transfer of funds into the capital projects funds and also into our special aid fund for summer school of $514,000 increase, the salaries, overall salaries of $430,000 increase. Curriculum and professional development, as was mentioned earlier, we were looking for two additional professional developers. There's $163,000 there, general instruction, $7,000. Pupil services and instructional computer proposing an increase of 127,000 in special education services exclusively salaries again is $201,000 increase. This is slightly offset by, again, previously, this this current year, we've experienced a decrease in health insurance. So that's helping us as we move into next year's budget. Now, if we to review the tax levy, tax cap conditions. Again, the reminder that 2% tax cap is not 2%, it's 2% or CPI, whichever is lower. And actually, it is lower this year. This year it was a 1.81% increase. And the assessment growth rate factor, which is brick and mortar, the actual increase is 0.32%. Now, the formula for how we derive the tax levy cap, we take the previous year, current year's levy, which is 97 million, 948. We apply the, again, brick and mortar growth rate. And that's a 0.0032, which is a increase which produces a $98 million, 261,000 levy. Then we remove the previous year's exemptions, again, debt service and capital expenditures. Less state aid is not included, is not part of the tax cap calculation. It's therefore it's excluded from this at this point. We take the 96 million, apply the actual CPI of 1.81% to get our tax levy before exclusions of 98 million, 134,403. We then add back in any exclusions. Again, they will remove these not including the tax cap calculation originally, and now we add them back in of 1,897,000, which produces tax levy limit with exclusions of 100 million, 32,140. As I just mentioned, the tax cap limit is 100 million, 32,140. The allowable tax levy is 2 million, 83,643,800 more than the current year levy or 2.13% increase. That would be the maximum. And since we are not raising the tax levy, our tax levy is 2 million, 83,643 dollars less. This represents a budget that would require a simple majority since it is well within the tax cap. If we had exceeded, if the Board of Education had proposed a budget in excess of the tax cap, which would would require a majority, super majority of 60%. Just to note, we have the New York State tax caps, most contingent budget requirements are remain in effect. The budget may only be presented twice to the voters for consideration. Again, we aren't sure, given the late date of the vote this year, whether we're going to be able to present another budget. So it may move right into contingency. Again, we're looking for further guidance from the state if that were to happen. And if the if we were able to put it up again, if it was defeated twice, we would then have to move into contingent budget. Now to review the revenues, the column, the second column over from your left, the proposed budget originally. We had proposed originally a 96, 7 million, 965,500 dollar tax levy. And that was later, given the fact of the COVID, we decreased that by $17,000 to make it a 0% increase. We have adjusted other revenues due to the fact that now we experience or looking to experience less of a interest in earnings. $150,000. State aid, we've reduced by $377,000. And sales tax, we reduced by $46,000. This has been offset, though all these reductions add up to $500,000 reduction. And the board has opted to appropriate more of the fund balance to offset that. So again, there's no tax levy increase. The total budget again this year is 111 million, 472,680. We reduce that by the other revenue that was shown on the last slide, 10 million, 324,183. And we further reduce it by the appropriated fund balance and the use of reserves of 3.2 million dollars, producing a tax levy of 97 million, 948,497. Now, the tax rate this is this produces, it follows, again, these are given the information as of this time. We don't calculate the actual tax rate. We're just using information based on the assessments provided for to us. At this time, the Bedford would see a 3.27% reduction. Lewisburg would see a 2.54% increase. North Salem would see a 1.77% decrease. And Palm Ridge would see a 4.59% decrease. Again, these are based on current assessed values. And these are projections at this time, and I'm sure they are subject to some minor changes.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. And this takes us back to a summary slide that shows many of the enhancements that we showed at the beginning of the budget, so I won't repeat them again here. But again, though the the budget increase is relatively small and the levy remains flat, there are many things in this budget that we are excited about and and hope to have the opportunity to bring to our students in the coming year. So those are reflected here on this slide. And then, as we've indicated before, we do anticipate that the state will reduce revenues because we don't know at this time what those reductions might be rather than guess at them and show those guesses in terms of dollar amounts. We've instead identified those places in the budget where if we do have to spend less, these are the areas where we would spend less. We think we can find some some savings in supplies by pre purchasing supplies out of some of this year's budget. The transfer to capital fund, which is the most significant area of savings, would be some of those more significant projects that we showed earlier, the renovations at the high school auditorium, as well as the upgrade in the high school gym. The four contingency positions that we've spoken about their value, we can also be a little bit more conservative in how we use them or slower in using them if necessary, and we can hold off on non essential equipment purchases. So there's quite a bit of savings there that we can realize if we don't in fact receive the state aid that we anticipate. We David's already mentioned the contingent budget and the fact that none, no districts are in our area are sure what's to happen if budgets are voted down in terms of the ability to go to a second vote. It's still something that has allowed us in the law, school districts are allowed to have two budget votes. But we're just not sure that the timing this year and the requirement that the vote be conducted by entirely by absentee ballot. No one is quite sure how that could happen and and happen prior to the end of this fiscal year for schools, which would be June 30th. So that's why we're spelling out a little bit more closely here, what should happen if we have to go to a contingent budget after a single vote. And even though the levy is flat, and one of the requirements of a contingent budget is that the levy can be no greater than it was in the prior year. So we've clearly already met that requirement of contingent budget. There are other requirements too, which are indicated here in this middle bullet, that a contingent budget must also reduce any non contingent items. There are certain expenditures in a budget that are not allowed in a contingent budget. For us, those expenditures total just over 1.4 million dollars. So if in fact, we have to go to a contingency budget, we would have to reduce another 1.4 million dollars worth of expenditures from certain places within the budget. And those are decisions that we would make to a later date if necessary. Moving on then, these are that we always show the actual propositions that the voters at this time, actually, many have already seen on the ballots that have arrived at home. Proposition number one is the proposition for the budget itself that authorizes the district to levy the taxes necessary to fund next year's budget. And proposition number two, this is the bus replacement proposition. There are a number of buses in need of replacement due to the the wear and tear and the life of those buses. The total funds to replace those buses is down here, 725,600. And again, this is not a request for new funds. These are all funds that exist within this year's 2019, 2020 budget. What we're asking for here is the voter's permission to allocate these funds for expenditures on these buses to move them from one place in the budget to another place so that we can expense them on the on the buses as necessary. And then finally, we have our meeting dates. Here we are tonight, almost at the bottom for the public hearing. And there's an asterisk next to the budget vote only to remind ourselves that this year it is not an in person vote on June 9th. It is entirely absentee ballot. You should have those ballots. If you don't have them, please let us know within the next couple of days so that we can help you out with that. Reach out to our board clerk in Monzen. And all those ballots must be back in the district's hands by five o'clock on June 9th in order to be counted. And that takes us to the end of this presentation. And if there are any questions, we would be happy to take them from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Alice. Thank you, David. Thank you to the entire team. Not only for tonight's overview and thoughtful presentation of the budget, but for all that went into the development of this budget and the subsequent adjustments to the budget as the world was changing around us. I just want to pause for a moment because as my board colleagues are gathering their own thoughts, I know we are also joined by some members of the community and we will have an opportunity for public forum in just a few moments. So if any community members wanted to ask a question about the budget or offer any comments or remarks about anything on tonight's agenda or pertaining to the district, we invite you to please use the Q and A functionality at the bottom of Zoom. And as long as you don't submit your comment anonymously, we will be happy to read your question or comment and then do our best to give it some thought and perhaps take it up in board dialogue toward the end of the meeting. With that, I just want to reiterate our gratitude to the entire administrative team for this budget, for the thoughtful ways that it anticipates the needs of our students in the coming year. And for its responsiveness to the needs of our community at this time, we really appreciate and feel it's very important that the levy is flat. It feels appropriate that we would be coming in more than 2 million dollars below the allowable tax cap. And just in looking at a quick analysis of districts across the region, our anticipated budget increase puts us in the bottom quartile of districts across Westchester and Putnam County, just to contextualize, you know, where we are with respect to that. And we're very appreciative. I don't know whether board members have additional questions or comments. I know we've been talking about the budget for quite some time. And I guess tonight's our last opportunity before the public. Actually, well, no, we'll be back on June 4th, but I'm not sure whether we'll be talking about the budget. But please, I open the floor if anybody has comments or questions.
Hey, Marjorie, this is Terrence. Can you hear me?
Yes, Terrence.
So I just want to reiterate a couple of comments that I have made in previous meetings in that if we look comparatively at the budget that has been presented tonight and juxtapose that budget with what some other districts in our region, in our state are doing and have had to do to adjust to these truly unprecedented times. I think we could call ourselves fortunate to be in this position thanks to the administration's leadership. And, you know, again, it's a testament that they're able to put together such a responsible budget that does not put additional burden on the taxpayers unnecessarily while they are still juggling a completely fluid situation related to the virus and all the changes that have had to happen literally on a day to day basis. So I hope the voters will really, you know, take the time to understand all the pieces and details that are in this budget and also put them in the broader context of where we are as a district and as a kind of region that are facing all these challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. Rory, were you waiting to say something also?
Oh, just a quick question. I think
Oh, just a quick question, I think probably of David or Danell. Regarding the revenue side of the budget, I know we've identified items that we might reduce in the event that state aid isn't what we anticipate. Have we received any guidance further from the state as to whether state aid will be reduced? And if so, by how much for the 2020, 2021 school year?
Not, not lately. No, we just, we used yeah, projections.
Okay. Yeah, thanks, David. Just curious if that had changed at all. Thank you.
So if I could just quickly, just wanted to add on something that, that Marjorie talked about with us being in the bottom quartile this year for the budget increase and kind of echoing and picking up on what Terrence said also about this is not an accident that we're in the strong financial position that we're in. If you look at over the last many number of years, we have been in the bottom 25th percentile in, in Westchester, Putnam County of, of increases. And I think it's, it's important for the, for the for the community to know that this is something that we have been focusing on for many years. And I think it does put us in a, in a great position to be able to have a flat levy this year without having to take drastic measures. And I, I think kudos to the administration, but it's not just, not just this year. It's, it's over, over. Bill, Bill said it earlier tonight, six years and the average increase is 0.3 or 0.4% per year. I think hopefully the community is taking notice of that because it is, it is important.
Thank you. Is anybody else waiting to make a comment or ask a question? Okay, if not, then I think that concludes our official budget hearing, presentation and discussion. And thank you. We really appreciate all that's gone into this. Thank you. That brings us to 9.01, which is our public forum. It doesn't appear that anybody has registered a question or comment. So I'm going to suggest that we push on to the consent agenda. And I'm not aware of any consent agenda items that need to be voted on separately. Maybe there will be some discussion or comments. I'm not sure. But would somebody like to move the consent agenda? Scott, can I ask you to move the consent agenda?
I move it.
Okay, thank you. And Julia, was that a second? Thank you so much. And did anybody have any clarifying questions or comments? If not, then we can vote on the consent agenda. So all in favor, please say aye.
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 Liz, is that an aye? Liz?
Sorry, aye. I didn't realize that was on.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, I believe that's seven zero. Terrific. Thank you. And this brings us to an opportunity for board dialogue and discussion. If anybody had any topics for this evening. And if not, then we can look ahead to future meetings. So our board will meet two more times between now and the end of the school year. We're scheduled to meet Thursday, June 4th at 7:30 PM. And then again, on Thursday, June 18th. There might also be a couple of subcommittee meetings occurring. I think I'm going to suggest that maybe we firm those up offline because I know things are somewhat fluid. Did anybody have anything they wanted to add about future meetings?
The only thing I'd throw in, Marjorie, is next week is going to be a nice celebration of both our candidates for tenure and our retirees. So a little shout out to the public who may want to join us to be part of that celebration, even if it's a virtual joining of us.
Thank you so much for the reminder, Alice. I really appreciate that. Well said. And we hope that we will be joined by members of the community. That would really be great. And if there are no future, I'm sorry, if there are no additional comments, then we can make a motion to adjourn. So I'll go ahead and make that motion. And I'll ask Rory to please second it. Thank you. Seconded by Rory. And all in favor, please say aye.
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 Liz, are you ready to adjourn?
Aye.
Okay, I think that's all seven of us. It's great to see everybody. Thank you again to our candidates for sharing their remarks regarding their candidacy. Best of luck to everybody. Stay healthy and safe and looking forward to seeing everybody the next time. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Good night.